Hi, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our regularly scheduled Monday, October 7th, 2024 meeting of the Haverford Township Board of Commissioners, our work session. Mr. Berman, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondik.
Present.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Here.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Here.
Commissioner Cavender.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner McCollum.
Here.
Commissioner Holmes.
Here. Chief? I would ask everybody to remain standing. A moment of silence and two intentions, two very different intentions, but I'd like us to take a moment. A year ago, terrible act of terrorism inflicted on our friends and, in some situations, family in Israel. This is a day we need to think about that day. We need to think about all the people that were affected that day. This was all the days since and all the violence that has come from that day. I also ask everybody to take a moment and think about the victims of Hurricane Helene, some of whom were taken terribly by surprise from a terrible storm. It has caused almost 300 American lives to date. So, if you will. Thank you all. Our first item tonight is a presentation on Safe Streets for All study. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, please. Welcome.
Can you hear me okay?
I think so. Is your light on?
It's on. I just know I'm tall. Thank you. I'm Ben Gresswitz. I'm with CH Planning. A pleasure to be with you tonight, talking about our work on the Safety Action Plan for the township. CH Planning was contracted to work with the township and kick off this study on safe streets throughout the township, starting this past March. And it was all kind of inspired by some of the work we did on a smaller scale in the Brinford neighborhood last August in 2023. And the purpose of doing this township-wide study was to analyze data on crashes, engage and collaborate with residents and local stakeholders, and provide recommendations to improve the streets and roadway safety in the township. The plan, which I think you've gotten a draft earlier today, is full of a lot of great maps and visualizations of the data and existing conditions. This map is a crash density map that really shows hotspots for crashes in yellow. We took data for over 7,000 crashes from 2018 to 2023 and cleaned that, mapped it. And we know, too, I should point out, that this is just police-reported data. There's more crashes that occur than just what gets reported, unfortunately. But this gives us a good picture of where most of these crashes are happening. And so, along major arterials, which are state roads in the township, like Westchester Pike, Eagle Road, and Darby Road, and collector roads like Erlington Road. Within that crash data, you can take a look at the subset of crashes that are fatal crashes and serious injury crashes. And so, in the red dots, you can see the fatal crashes; in the orange, the serious injury. And all the roadway segments around them that they touch, we selected those as these high-injury corridors. So, this map is this high-injury network. And among all the miles of roadway within the township, 10% of the roadways and the segments made it into this high-injury network. I mentioned before, you know, it's had a significant amount of community engagement, many through meetings. We did a virtual kickoff meeting in March and then followed by nine focus group meetings that went for the subsequent months in your various wards. And I wanted to thank all the commissioners that came out and also spread the word to their constituents about these. These are really fruitful meetings we had. We also did a survey that isn't mentioned here but had great participation, a good way for people that couldn't make it out to the meetings to voice their concerns. And we formed an advisory committee that consisted of township officials, police department, Discover Haverford, various residents, and Delaware County, and summed up our findings and presented them in a final public meeting in May with some recommendations. Throughout, we were coordinating with the county and also the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, which is also known as DVRPC or the federally designated Metropolitan Planning Organization for the region. And that's important because as we coordinate with them, if we get federal funding, the feds really want to see that coordination with the MPO. I'll just get into some key factors or sort of goals that we set to address throughout the recommendations. And that was, number one, reducing speed, which in turn would help eliminate deaths and serious injuries, providing safe access to schools, trails, and other key destinations, and providing accessible transportation facilities like sidewalks and trails. These recommendations on this and the next two slides, there's about 12 in all in the plan. This is small text, and I won't get into all the details and run through each one of them. I'll just highlight a couple along the way, just to give you a flavor for the diversity of things. Some things deal with infrastructure. Sometimes it's policy. Sometimes it might be an educational initiative. But the first one, arterial intersection enhancements, that's, you know, really trying to address that, where we saw arterials as a big place for, you know, incidents of crashes. And by addressing improvements at intersections, we can start bringing those numbers down. So, things like doing a leading pedestrian interval, which sort of sets the pedestrian walking ahead of the green light for the parallel traffic, will allow those folks that are turning to see that pedestrian out in the crosswalk a little ahead of them and not just turn and not notice that. Things like a pedestrian refuge island that might be in the median gives a shorter distance to traverse for the pedestrian and gives them a safer spot to be in in the middle of the road until the next cycle. Or rectangular rapid flashing beacons, when you don't have signals, is a good way to hey, signal to the oncoming traffic that someone's crossing when they press a button. So, that's just some of the treatments that might be recommended. On the next slide, the Safe Roads to School program, you may have heard of, it's been around for a while. It's a federal program that funnels to the states. And you can do infrastructure improvements through this funding, but you also can do a lot of educational opportunities, get kids and, you know, youth thinking about traffic and engage the community and parents through various means, bike to school day, et cetera. We think getting a survey out to parents and understanding how people get to school or how much they would like their kid to be able to walk, but the reasons why they don't want that kid to walk right now, it would be a helpful thing to pursue at some of the different schools. Moving on, lighting was something that was very much brought up in the different public sessions. And, you know, this time of year, we were reminded that people still want to be active and out at night, like ourselves tonight, but also want to be able to get home safely. And lighting helps us do that. And so, some suggestions for lighting on trails and various street segments was mentioned. Another part of our contract beyond the plan, it's actually going to be happening more this fall, is this demonstration project that we'll be seeing in the Brinford neighborhood, kind of came out of that Brinford study. And there's four different locations in that neighborhood that we are going to sort of pilot test some interventions. And these are, these demonstration projects are low cost, you know, just using paint or cones temporarily and seeing how people respond and how safety improves or doesn't improve by testing this before you make a more serious invention, investment in intervention. So, on Rugby Road, for instance, we're going to do a mid-block chicane. Chicanes are sort of these sort of, you might call it a bump out on the side of the road. They stagger them so that basically you'd be kind of weaving a little bit rather than having a straightaway where people just are prone to speed up, slow people down a little bit, pay more attention. Hard to go through a chicane while looking at your phone. And Polo Road is a mid-block pinch point where we have people kind of drawn into the center at the same spot where people don't want to be getting too close to the oncoming traffic, so they have to slow down. Rugby Road and Railroad Avenue intersection will have these bulb bouts, so extending the sidewalk out at the intersection, making a shorter crossing distance and painting crosswalks. And then on Buck Lane, taking the two-way road into one way and using one, the unused lane, as a multi-use path for pedestrians and bicyclists and seeing how people like enjoying that experience. So, two more slides here. I wanted to mention that we did put in a grant application to a federal program called Safe Streets and Roads for All, SS4A, and that went in August. If we are able to secure that grant, there's more work that we think can be done to augment the plan that we have and to really get data where we didn't have data available now. So, areas like taking an inventory of infrastructure, say ADA accessible ramps, knowing those locations, gathering more speed data, because we know not every road had a recent speed study done. And again, lighting, getting a more comprehensive plan for where lighting might be needed, and corridor access, dealing with things like commercial quarters, when you have a sidewalk or a bike lane and all these different business entrances and driveways that are conflict points, are there opportunities to consolidate those entryways into one and route people through the parking lots? So, just taking a look at those kinds of things, as well as funding more demonstration projects like we're doing in Brinford, so that we just, again, before you make a serious investment, know what works, know what works in what context and locally in your township rather than just some far-off example somewhere else. So, finally, I'll end with, you know, later tonight, you're going to be discussing on your agenda this resolution. And this resolution setting a goal for Safe Streets for All, it's something that is, you know, trying to get to 50% of current deaths and serious injuries by 2030, and then a goal of zero fatalities and injuries by 2040. And this is something that's really being done by neighboring jurisdictions and nationally by a lot of groups, this movement called Vision Zero, to really say, much of this is preventable and these deaths, you know, don't have to be happening even if, right now, there, I think there were seven in the period that we had in the study. It's still seven families, seven people's friends impacted, and it may not be as high as other jurisdictions, but it's important to prevent. Goals, we know, are important for just getting, if you want to get somewhere, you set a goal, right? This is not a binding goal, but it's something that sets you in a direction. And then I would just say that anyone receiving federal funding through the grant that we applied for and other things in these programs are required to have adopted a resolution such as this. So, we need that in place if we get the grant and we can move forward with that federal funding as a result. And that's all I have for you. Any questions?
I have a question or two.
Yeah.
So, the first question I have is when I'm looking at the diagram that isolates, you know, the roads that have the fatalities on it, you know, just looking eyeballing it, it looks like the majority, the majority of these are state roads where we have limited authority over.
Yeah.
And so, I guess my question to you is, can you explain kind of how you would see, you know, these action points rolling out, you know, by us, this is the township, yet on a road that we don't have any say over?
Yeah.
Or any direct say over?
Right, right. You would obviously have a say in anything that the state might be doing would probably require some public meetings and stuff in the township. But I think part of my point of talking about the coordination we did with the county and with DVRPC as a regional body is that those are these entities that want to be in conversation and want to be hearing local issues and where these projects are desired so that there's a process of saying, okay, let's get this on the Transportation Improvement Program, the TIP, through DVRPC, or that there might be, you know, more avenues, more conversations to say, how do we get, you know, this showed up in our plan, it's not our road, but we, you know, through public feedback, found this is an important issue. And so, how do we navigate that?
Okay. And just to clarify, and this might not necessarily be the best question for you, it might be for Mr. Berman, I don't know. The resolution that we're actually going to be discussing at some point on the agenda today and then voting on next week, that is just, correct me if I'm wrong, that's just to basically agree to, in principle, the safety parameters. It's not necessarily a vote on any specific safety program or those are things.
It's not a how. It's a goal to say.
It's just adopting a goal.
Yeah.
Okay.
Having by 2030 and zero by 2040. Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, sure. And I hope, too, I think, you know, and I'll point out that even the recommendations are built in a way that are generalized, that they don't, they're not even saying, you know, we recommend you do this thing and we recommend it here or here specifically. There's some guidance in the plan that might suggest, you know, and certainly that where those fatalities are happening, you might be looking at those locations, but it's not prescriptive that way either in the plan, specific interventions in different spots.
Thank you.
Yes.
About a year ago, PennDOT had a proposal for a road diet on Haverford Road. Was that something that you looked at or?
So, I think it came up. Dave, did you want to say anything?
We did discuss the fact that there were thoughts to do that road diet, and we looked at how that, how these interventions might help address the cut-through traffic that would inevitably go through those neighborhoods. We didn't have a good sense that a lot of these interventions would alleviate all that potential cut-through traffic, but it's not addressed specifically in that way in the study.
Okay.
Yeah, it is pretty high-level for the township and certainly things that are current get discussed, but not in the depth to, you know, resolve all those issues, yeah.
I have a question.
Yes.
Thank you so much for sharing the information about Brinford. That is the result of a traffic study that we did probably about a year ago now.
Yeah.
Started about a year and a half ago, I think. What are the, and Dave may have to weigh in on some of this, a couple of questions. So, this is very specific, but in the time since we had the study and these have come out, for example, Rugby Road now has approval for a speed bump. So, do we really still need them on that specific street? Or are there alternate locations that you have been looking at or would recommend? That's just, that's one question. I'll just, I'll give you all my questions and then.
Go ahead.
I also, what are the plans for sort of community outreach from this point with Brinford? Because I know Brinford was very excited, and then the bigger project came, and everyone's very interested in knowing what changes are obviously going to come to the neighborhood. So, will there be a separate meeting specifically for these proposed Brinford changes? And then my third question is, how long does the demonstration occur before then we make a decision? And then I presume we have to apply for a grant and then put in a permanent solution?
Right. So, I'll kind of go backward, and I think Dave probably wants to weigh in a little bit. But I would say, first of all, that we're only talking about them being in place for maybe three, four weeks.
Okay.
Just as a, as a, just a temporary demonstration, right? And the community will get notified nearby, you know, to anticipate the timing of it. And we're working with the township engineer, doing some measurements that started last week. And I think we're, now that some other things have fallen into place, this is where we're turning some attention. So, you'll start, it's been a while, but you'll start hearing about it again soon. And, but I think you're right. Like, if you find success in these things, then there might be grants that you apply for to do the construction for the more permanent things.
Okay.
And as far as the speed bump, I'm less aware that, I still think it might be relevant to test these things, you know, and see, especially if it's only for a few weeks. It's just, it's just like, what if? And let's see what happens, you know, in combination now with the speed bump perhaps. But I'm sorry, was it built yet or was it just approved?
It was approved a couple of months ago. Temporary.
Okay.
Well, they're all temporary, though, right? But it's been approved and they may continue to want it there. Like, it may continue to appear.
They would usually take them down around December the 1st, mostly because of plowing issues. So, it'll stay probably until the end of November, beginning of December.
And is it in now?
I believe that it is. I can't tell you 100% but I believe it is. Yes, it is.
Okay. And so, it'll come down, I'm sorry, in December, and then will they have to go through the process again if they want it again?
Well, that's always an ongoing discussion to see how the neighbors felt about it. Have you had any, well, we can talk about that later, but.
No, I didn't even know it was in.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a sense of, you know, like, two interventions on one road, just to be able to explain it and talk about it a little bit.
Yeah, so it sounds like there's potential for some overlap at the same time or maybe just having, you know, one occurred and then the next, but.
Because they may end up liking these more, right? Is that sort of the idea that they may prefer?
Right. I mean, you would say that generally, we talk about these as being, the ones that we're proposing as being horizontal measures, right?
Yeah.
The bumps being the vertical. And sometimes you find that, you know, emergency response vehicles and things like that prefer the horizontal, perhaps. All of them should be kind of made to accommodate, but it's, these horizontal might be a little newer to folks, so I think a lot of folks are aware of and experience speed bumps, and they're effective, so it might be very good. I don't know.
Yeah.
But I don't know if, Dave, did you want to weigh in?
I didn't have a lot to add, but.
Yeah.
First of all, Ben, thank you. The presentation was excellent. The CH Planning was not aware of the speed bumps.
Yeah, I mean, it just happened.
So, they didn't know that that was happening. So, there may be an alternative place that we would look at for the test for the demonstration project rather than Rugby Road.
I think there's some flexibility there. So, and we can talk to the engineer about that and Dave some more.
I ask one more question. Well, two more. One, you said you'll be hearing more about Brinford. Will I hear about it or will the community hear about it with a meeting?
So, we, the detailed study of Brinford with CH Planning concluded last year, and we did invite CH Planning to come to this meeting and make the presentation. I think it'll be up to the township to decide next steps with that community interaction.
Okay. And then, I'm sorry, one last question, and this may be more for like Dave and John and Dave. So, I understand the Buck Lane change to mean that the first block next to Haverford Road will get much less traffic because of the diversion that you're making on the upper part of Buck. I also understand that if you did that change down towards Haverford, it would remove a lot of parking spaces. Am I understanding it correctly?
I would say would probably yes. I mean, you know, parking over is limited anyway.
Yeah.
On Buck Lanes, because I don't think anybody has driveway, so that would be a big issue, yes.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand those dynamics, as it sounds like you would reduce traffic on that more crowded block, but you're not making it one way and eliminating all those parking spots. Is that accurate?
That's correct. You're talking about the block closest to Haverford.
Just that one tight block.
That would remain two-way. The one-way section would be up further past the park.
Right.
And that is where the parking would be affected because there's not enough room for a walking lane and traffic lane.
Right. But it's a benefit to that bottom block because they really need the parking. I mean, it would eliminate so much parking if you did make that change down there.
Absolutely.
I wouldn't think.
Yes, and that block between Railroad and Pammy, where we're going to do the temporary fix, there's, everybody has driveways up there, and most people don't park on the street, so.
Right.
I don't think it would have that effect up there as it would in the other block.
One last, this is my last question, I promise. It seems like that's going to lessen traffic on the first block of Buck by making this change, because people will not be taking the one-way up from Haverford and because there's nowhere to go, right? Is that accurate?
Well, yes, there are other.
Is it more going down? I'm sorry, I just really want to know.
My experience only from past changes is it will dump more traffic on other streets, because if you can't use the one, you're going to go around the block and use another street, more than likely.
Yeah.
People always find the different routes very quickly when they come to, you know, stop somewhere.
Yeah.
As we all do.
So, it doesn't really protect the first block of Buck necessarily?
I wouldn't think so. I think you'll still see the same amount of traffic.
Yeah. All right. Thank you very much. I know I took this on a little bit of a diversion.
It's a work session, I believe.
I appreciate it, yeah.
Part of the work is the questions, yeah.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask a couple of questions, and thank you for your wonderful presentation. I'm looking at the crash density map that you all have. Yes, that one right there. And it's kind of following up on what my fellow commissioner, Mr. Gondik, was talking about in terms of how you mitigate the speeding and the density of the crashes along state roads, like Westchester Pike, Eagle Road, City Line Avenue. What, assuming that we would work very closely with the state, in your experience, what sorts of things could be done to make people be more likely to follow the speed limits in these areas? Because people zip down Westchester Pike at a very rapid rate. And I have been contacted by residents who are actually afraid of letting their children cross Westchester Pike in order to go to school. So, it's a huge problem how these state roads bisect our neighborhoods and don't allow children and even adults to move easily between sections of the township.
Yeah.
So, I was wondering if, in your experience, what could be done for these state roads?
Yeah, I mean, from other studies that I've been a part of, I mean, certainly there's things like traffic circles that are proposed that will slow people down but keep things moving through. I, you know, there's a lot of different, you know, there's like almost these recipes that you got to meet with the context, so, you know, it doesn't work everywhere, right? Same thing for like taking out a lane or even a road diet, you know, might be very appropriate in some context to just say, you know, if we get a lane that is, say, a multi-use path now, motorists might slow down because they're coexisting with, you know, not the tanks that they're driving in, but real people, and they may say, okay, I got to be a little more alert here, you know? So, there's just a lot of different things that can happen, even, you know, parking or whatever, that the change in activities can make a different feel for the motorists. Similarly, you know, maybe perhaps some of these horizontal measures. But on a bigger state road, it's not always, not all those, you know, ingredients for the recipe are always available. And I think that PennDOT 2 will have a lot of different suggestions because they deal with those kinds of facilities very often, right?
And given that we're undergoing a comprehensive plan process right now, and people are very interested in more pedestrian and bike-friendly, you know, pathways or however you want to call it, what in your experience is the best, what do you recommend to protect bicyclists and pedestrians from being? and pedestrians from being injured by cars? Because we've had a couple fatalities that were, uh, uh, over the summer, which were just dreadful.
Yeah.
And we would like to keep our township pedestrian and bike-friendly, but everyone being safe.
Right, and, I mean, people talk about protected bike lanes, protected, um, uh, trails will off, often be offset from the road and be protected by distance, um, and what those protections are kind of various, you might have the little plastic bollards periodically or something more substantial, um, you can have planters sometimes as lining the roadway, separating them might be an opportunity for some beautification as well and, and bring some, uh, you know, native plants and things along a roadway. Uh, there's just a lot of, uh, options, I would say, so I, I'm sorry for not being too committal, but I, I think that the, um, options are broad and it takes specific studies that get into the specifics of that context that help you lead, lead that direction, I don't know.
No, thank you for your question, it's just sort of part of the process of educating.
Yeah.
Everybody about what the options are and that we have lots of things to explore so that we can keep people safe.
Yeah.
Get to that zero fatalities, zero crashes. Thank you, thank you.
Sure, thank you for the question. I think we had maybe someone else?
Anybody else have any other questions? Thank you very much.
All right.
Excellent work and excellent presentation and for responding to my colleagues' questions. And I look forward to us considering this.
All right, thanks so much, take care.
Uh, the next item on our agenda would be any commissioner committee reports, um, any of my colleagues wish to report any actions in their committees?
Just to report that the finance committee, uh, met earlier today, um, to discuss the upcoming budget meetings and, uh, strategy for that moving forward.
We on schedule for getting the budget when we think so and?
Yes.
Would you mean it's a good, great, thank you, Commissioner McCloskey, anybody else? I'm hearing nothing, next item on our agenda is, um, our chief giving us his monthly police report. Welcome back, Chief.
Thank you, Commissioner. So the chief's report's September 2024, 20 arrests, uh, I'm sorry, 490 traffic citations, 22 non-traffic citations, 76 written warnings, 474 parking ticket situation. We had a robbery on 925 at 893 Penn Street, the massage therapy, uh, business, the police responded for robbery, just occurred within 15-minute time delay. A, a male wearing a blue hooded sweatshirt, uh, came in and demanded, asked for a massage and then as they were getting prepared for it, uh, he demanded money from the, uh, employee. Uh, he fled on foot and fled in a green SUV west on Penn Street, no injuries were reported. Uh, same night, uh, same person ended up in Jersey at another massage therapy business and, uh, did the same thing, uh, the proprietor took a chair, threw it at the guy and he took off, so. And also there are different municipalities and towns that are also looking at him, uh, for the same thing, so, uh, he has not been arrested yet, uh, they did find a car with a rental, it was returned and they have sufficient DNA from that to proceed forward, so we're working with the other towns involved with it to make it arrest. Aggravated assault on unit block of Vernon Road, police responded to, for, uh, this was on 914, uh, for shots fired, uh, it's always frightening when you get those calls upon arrival, two males had engaged in a domestic-related argument, one of the males struck the other with a pistol in his hand, which caused a gun to fire, no one was hit by the round, the actor fled to scene, the victim has been uncooperative with police and the investigation is ongoing. Uh, we had three thefts, attempts from autos, 1300 block Lawrence Road, license plate was taken, uh, 800 block of Cricket on 93 for a Cadillac convertible from a Hyundai, uh, and Keen's Car Care on 916, a company license plate was reported missing, but the person, the owner does not know where it disappeared. Uh, we're seeing a spike in bicycle and scooter thefts, as you see them around town more and more in the price of them, uh, but we're seeing more and more of those, we had four of those taken in, in the past month or so. Um, and, um, that's it for the report, we had one mail theft, 2500 block of Rosemont Avenue, a, um, medication was stolen from the front porch. Uh, we have a sheet now, we have contacted PennDOT in talking about those scooters, which we all had questions on, what our enforcement powers are, which are very limited, uh, but there's a fact sheet that I will send to all the commissioners tomorrow and we can share it with your constituents. Um, the problem is some of the enforcement, uh, you see many, many, many more of them and now the holidays are coming, Christmas, you're going to see a ton more out there besides the fire hazard part with the lithium batteries, which you've all seen stories on, uh, which do just catch on fire for no reason sometimes when they're on charge and the dangers of the, uh, the use running those, you see it running two or three in nighttime, this time of year it's dark, uh, it's unbelievable because it just, you know, that brain's not fully functioning yet and that this, you know, they want to have a good time and they're riding against traffic, in traffic, uh, so we're very concerned about it and we'll see what we can do to help educate at this point.
And Chief, is there anything that we can do to send to the state to ask for help or support or anything?
I had asked our state rep to look into it, uh, and that's, that's where it's at at this point, but we had contacted PennDOT after that and then got the, the actual fact sheet and list speeds, uh, and, and horsepower and all that sort of stuff, what has to be licensed, and most of them don't have to be licensed.
Cause I know you get calls a lot, I get calls a lot about what, what we can do about that and I just say the same thing that you said about.
We, we've had probably three serious accidents, so most of them from, uh, the operator of the scooter driving into a car.
Yeah, cause kids just go right, they just go right.
We, we all see that, so, but we're working hopefully to make everybody a little safer.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Commissioners.
Thank you, Chief. Um, also for our consideration next week will be two ordinances, the first ordinance for our consideration will be a stormwater management amendment, it's first reading. So we will be having a presentation on this as we would like to see it. Um, and, um, I would welcome our team internally and outside from Pinoni to tell us about this.
I'm going to begin, um, with Article 1, so erosion and sediment control. This is the chapter or the article that, um, regulates our grading permits, so that's our movement of earth, any earth disturbance. Um, a lot of the changes that we made are just for consistency with our operating procedures, um, internally and to maybe update a little bit of our procedures because they haven't been looked at for a while. Um, I can go, I can go like piece by piece or just really summarize, so I was gonna go with summarize and then we can just ask any questions at the end?
Summarizing would be terrific.
Our main changes, um, kind of are to add to the scope that grading and excavation language, so we have to state that this is for the grading permits. Um, we do set a threshold, uh, for no permits for grading less than or under 200 square feet, so that is new. Um, we did remove some ambiguity in the language for something that was called a no-fee permit for things where you were doing landscaping and, and earth movement, um, for very minor things. Um, updated the permit application procedure generally, um, just to be consistent with surrounding municipalities and, and to update that, uh, moved, moved a few pieces around there, so some red line, but, um, nothing large there. Reduced the threshold for stormwater to 500 square feet for consistency with the Article 2, which you'll have a little bit more detail on very soon. Um, we did update plan submission requirements once again, just to add some clarity, consistency with, uh, surrounding municipalities and just to update things for where we're at today. Um, and then another main change was just to kind of, there's been some staffing changes in codes and we did place some more of the kind of inspection responsibilities on the township engineer moving forward and, and that's about it. So if there was anything redlined that you guys had a specific question about?
Jamie, um, the 200 square feet, what is?
So the, the goal there was to say like you're building a deck and you want to do your foundations and you don't need a grading permit for that, we're going to cover everything under a building permit.
Okay.
We'll look at your foundation that way.
What was he, was there no exemption before or?
There, there, there were like, it, there was no exemption, but there was a no-fee permit and that threshold was, um, a little bit unclear in our, our, our fee resolution, our resolution where our fees are actually, so our operating procedures really needed to be clarified. Um, and so our next step after adopting this will be to update our fee schedule and per our resolution, per resolution, just to follow what we have here on the books.
The, the no-fee permit though, what did that apply to? Was it like a specific square footage or?
No, but it was just, it was mostly the, it's on your, it's under 78-3 and it's that, that area that says it's mostly for, um, landscape or vegetation that would be disturbed and things like, um, like landscaping was really, I think, the intent there, but there wasn't a threshold or a square footage set to it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Jamie, I don't know if that's, this, um, might be a much bigger question, but I'm just curious to get your insights on it. So stormwater management obviously is getting more and more urgent as we're getting unpredictable water. Do you feel like our ordinance and our guidelines we have now, like can account for additional needs that we may have in the future or how do you think we kind of stand on that?
So I think that's a better question, um, for, for the Pinoni team, but also, yeah, it's, you're going to hear a little bit more about what the bigger changes are for stormwater for Article 2. So Chapter 78 is both, um, this erosion and sediment control, which is our grading permits, as well as stormwater. Um, and so we did everything together, you know, the whole chapter and we're bringing it all to you. Their changes are much, uh, bigger.
Okay, so we're only voting?
We're only on grading right now, yeah.
Okay. Well, someone alert Pinoni that I'm going to be asking him when it comes.
Yeah.
There he is. Sorry, David, cut my glasses on.
All right.
Jamie, I have one more question. I have a, a number of homes in my ward that are on hills and if so, I don't know, how would?
That's generally going to be covered by steep slopes.
Okay.
Right, our steep slope, um, ordinance does protect.
And that's not changed, that's not?
That's not changing in here.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Okay.
Um, can you pull up? So if everybody remembers Bridget Gillan, who's, um, so just as a, um, just going to help to present everything, and she and I did the, the heavy lift on the Chapter 2 part, which is the stormwater management and, um, actually Article 2.
Yeah.
And collaborated a lot with Jamie, she was a huge help and Dave, so it certainly wasn't done in a vacuum. Um, so I'm going to just back up, back up, well, here, here's the, just to remind everybody what's in the packet is a, a clean copy of the ordinance, which is right before this one, which doesn't have any notations, it's all black and white, uh, John was a big help till he helped to administratively set it up properly. That was followed up by this, this copy, which has some color connotations in it, which, which we thought would be really helpful in the presentation. And, um, anything in red, just to really simplify it, anything in red, well, no, let me get that going, anything in red is required by the state of Pennsylvania and it's there to match the model ordinance and explain what the requirements of the state of Pennsylvania mean, but there, there need to do's. And then there were a couple we highlighted in green that were suggestions by some of our boards that we think are great ideas and we don't even, they don't even want any discussion. There are two items that we're going to discuss in a little more detail at the end, they were, they were highlighted in, in purple and then in yellow, um, but I'll come to them anyway, so even, and we'll, we'll point them out, like we'll go right to the pages on them. So I'm going to give a little bit of background because, um, a little bit to answer Commissioner Cavender's question, there's, there's been a huge genesis in stormwater management in general. So prior to 2005, we had an ordinance that was adopted and updated in the seventies. So for, for example, my house was built in the thirties, there's no stormwater management in my neighborhood. Haverford Reserve, which was built 10, 15 years ago, was built with our most current ordinance, the one that we're, that we're updating here again, and the stormwater management is substantially different, substantive, and it addresses, it addresses a lot of what you, what you're talking about, which is, uh, problems with stormwater management systems that exist today. The O5 update, which, which is this book, the O5 update was required by the state of Pennsylvania and it was based on a very detailed Act 167 study of watersheds, by watershed, not by neighborhood, not by municipal boundary, by watershed. We're in the Darby-Cobs watershed, the Crump Creek watershed is next to us, uh, Springfield Marple's in Crump Creek, Brandi Line's further out, uh, Mill Creek's in Lower Mary and the Schoolkill, they all have different, they all have now empirically identified discharge criteria that is part of that O5 update. The other thing the O5 update, it did for the first time, it addressed what we call water quality and recharge, where you take water, you take ground, you take runoff and you clean it before it goes down to the stream and when you can, you infiltrate it, you recharge. So on top of everything else with the rate control, there was what, it was, what was introduced was rate reduction to do exactly what you're talking about, to take care of the fact that my house has no stormwater management, downstream on Darby Creek, you, they, they see ramifications of that, so part of the O5 update was to help to make up for the fact that there was no stormwater management since the beginning of time. And, and so these studies and these updates that are coming from the state are very much aware of exactly what you're talking about, which is the fact that we have a change in community, we have density changes, we have everything. So, um, in addition to the, the additional requirements of water quality and recharge. Now, fast forward to 2022. In 2022, the state of Pennsylvania said, good model, we want to tweak it again, we want to update it some. So a couple of years ago, believe it or not, we came in front of the board and said, here's the model ordinance that the county of Delaware prepared based on the DEP, heads up, we're going to have to adopt a new model ordinance, but we don't want to do it tomorrow because the DP has not yet approved the model ordinance that the county prepared and the board had also suggested that some input come on the model ordinance from a couple of our boards, the EAC and a planning commission. So the, it was important to us to get the model ordinance approved by DP, they haven't. Um, so we can, we're sort of interpreting that as a de facto approval, I mean, for two years they haven't commented on it and they haven't, they haven't changed anything and our neighbors are, at this point, they're all adopting the ordinance per the model. In addition, um, the, the planning commission and, as I mentioned, the EAC reviewed it. So, so based on all that, now here we are two years later and we've done a very, very detailed update of the ordinance, besides incorporating the stuff that's required by the state, incorporating the vast majority of the recommendations of the EAC and there were a good number of them, and it really came two recommendations out of the planning commission and we've incorporated both of them. We're going to talk a little bit in detail about one of the PC recommendations and we're going to talk in a little bit of detail about one of the EAC recommendations. Um, so there's, I've really got about six or seven items of note that I don't even want to get into a lot of detail on, again, I'm just going to get into detail on, on two of them in particular and inform you a little bit more so. So of the four that are worth bringing up more, um, one of the comments that came out of both the planning commission and the EAC was to make accommodations in the stormwater man, I'm trying not to get too much into, trying not to go too engineering on the calculations, but make accommodations in your stormwater management requirements for a developer who saves tree clusters. And you can bake that into the calculations and, and you can address that in your runoff calculations and your recharge rates. PC liked the idea, EAC liked the idea, it's right out of what's called the BMP manual, Best Management Practices manual of the state of Pennsylvania, so we've rolled that into the ordinance. Um, we can actually go to page, show you where it is, but it's on page 52 of the ordinance if you, if, this point out, you want to pull up 52? Now, you know what, let's go to the other ones, cause the other ones are going to be a little bit more in detail. These are a little high-level ones. Um, then there's, there's some appendix in the ordinance that are wonderful appendix, there are certain stormwater management facilities that are really geared towards an addition on a house or a patio that we require stormwater management, but we don't want an applicant or a home builder to have to retain an engineer to do that work and there's these nice formulas that are meant to be used by anybody to say, hey, you want to put? wanna put twelve-hundred-foot addition on your house? Here's a formula to put a seepage bed in your backyard or a rain garden or some other facilities. It's a wonderful tool. We always had it in there and now it's getting updated, it's even a little bit better model. So that, that appendix is gonna go in. Now, let me go to the two that really, we think at least warrant some additional attention. So Bridget, why don't you pull up the calculation method one? That would be?
Did I tell you what page that was?
Fifty-three. Right here.
Yep.
Yep, see the purple?
Yeah, cross out in purple.
Yep. So there's multiple methods you're allowed to use to, right now, to calculate runoff from a site and that basis of that calculation then has you design your stormwater managed facilities, one of which is a USDA NRCS model, the TR-20. The last one on the bottom is what's called the rationale method. The state's okay using that. The PC recommended, we, we, we don't any further allow the use of that. That rationale method is, and we agree, by the way. So the rationale method is not the best, most accurate methodology for calculating runoff. You'll get a much more accurately sized, and frankly, the rational method undersizes the runoff from a site. So the end result is our stormwater management facilities will be upsized some by, by eliminating the rational method. But just as important, whether upsize or downsize, it'll be more accurate and it'll be more representative, just so happens they'll upsize. The clamping, planning commission's quote was, it could be one of the most impactful things we could do in revising this ordinance. And we agree. Our neighbors still allow it, except for Lower Marion, they don't allow the use of the rational method. The rational method is, it's actually the method I learned with first, but it is really geared more towards sizing storm showers and culverts as opposed to stormwater management facilities. So we think it's a wonderful recommendation by the planning commission, not required by the state, that we take it out, but certainly not prohibited by the state that we, that we take it out. And we think it'll be a wonderful impact environmentally and stormwater management for the township without putting any kind of an unfair burden on anybody. And probably sixty to seventy percent of the applications we get now already use the, the NRCS method. So we're not asking anybody to change speeds and pivot mid, 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 midstream. It's very well established, fairly well accepted. So it's, it's, tightens everything up. The second one is what we call the applicability table. So right now, and, and Jamie, Jamie referenced it a little bit, right now you can do any, you could put any new or replacement impervious cover in your yard, on your property, up to nine-hundred-and-ninety, nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine square feet without doing any stormwater management. The mod, the ordinance is in place now, then allows you to go from a thousand to two thousand with the, the stormwater management that I mentioned is a very easy formula. You don't have to engineer anything, you just, you put it, basically you put a seepage bed or some kind of rain garden on your property. The EAC would like to take that threat, recommend taking that threshold from a thousand down to five hundred. That's probably the most significant recommendation they made that I think the board needs to be aware of. What it does, just to state the obvious, if someone's putting a twenty by thirty addition on their house right now, no stormwater management. We adopt the ordinance as, as recommended, stormwater management. It doesn't have to be engineered, which is very important, cause that's a big call, that's a cost, but you still gotta build the facility. That, I think, unless there's any other questions or more dialogue or anything, that's, that gives a good summary of what this model is and where it is. The need, the need that has, which is the red, a couple of good, lot of good suggestions from both our boards that we incorporated, two of which we thought warranted some call out and some, make sure you guys are aware of them.
I have a question. Is there a difference standard for residences versus like a commercial or public property for storm, stormwater management?
Stormwater management, stormwater management. If it's on your backyard or the Landmark Shopping Center or Hareford Reserve, everybody's held, it's the same standard.
So, I see. I was just thinking about when we were gonna do a driveway at Polo, was that more than a thousand square feet? Cause we were building in stormwater.
We had actually, Dave probably remembers, we had built into the budget for the addition of, of X amount of square feet or more. We don't require stormwater management for maintenance and the ordinance doesn't, like you could, you don't see it for milling and overlay on roads. You don't see it when we replace, we don't, we don't require it when somebody does maintenance on their own driveway in their yard, but we were gonna add impervious cover. And the applicability part there was once we got over the thousand, we had to do an easy stormwater. Once we got over two thousand, we had to put a base, a stormwater facility in. In fact, if you guys remember last week, with, last, last meeting with one mill, when we're talking about the parking lot, we've got accommodations there for stormwater management.
So is the five hundred feet the same for everybody residential?
Right now, oh yeah, it would be the same for everybody, yes. But from a practical standpoint, we know it's rare on any non-residential.
So does it increase costs on?
Oh yeah.
People?
Absolutely. It'll, the average base will probably cost someone one to two thousand dollars.
But that's in addition to whatever you're paying?
Engineering, and that's why we're glad that the recommendation isn't to drop the other threshold, that's another fifteen hundred dollars or two thousand, so, but that's staying the same. It really is the five hundred to a thousand threshold.
All right, thanks. So you feel, it seems like you feel like these changes, however they turn out for the ordinance, does help us kind of update for the new reality of stormwater management?
So, yes, with everything, but I gotta be a little bit honest, we talked, to talk about the, the applicability component, that gets a little more towards policy and a little less towards engineering, cause now you're really getting into the roots of the backyards of your constituents.
Right. But generally speaking?
Generally speaking, I'll say this, the rational method impact, deleting that will have, almost with that exception, intuitively we know and the PC knows, a bigger impact than dropping the threshold.
Yeah.
That's, that's, all this stuff in here is pretty good stuff, like even the trees and the, the somebody appendices are great. The biggest impact and it was not required will be the rational method. We think intuitively. And again, so is the PC, they feel the same way.
So we, we had an updated version in O-five and then we had an updated version in twenty-two? Is that what they said?
No, twenty-two, this is the updated version in twenty-two.
So when you look at stormwater and how much more there is, is this something we're gonna have to update regularly?
Oh yeah, the state of Pennsylvania could absolutely, it's a living document, right? It was done, it was started, updated in seventy-three, there were a couple other ones in between, they're documented actually in the codification of the book. The state required the O-five update, they required a few in between, but we already had them covered. So even though they wanted an update, we already met the criteria for the update. This one we have to update. Look, it could be ten years from now before we're back in front of the board with a mandatory update, it could be two years. There, there will be more updates coming out of the state and there's always, again, it's a living document, there's always stuff that can come from us or the planning commission or EAC or somebody that thinks it's a logic, there's some logical updates to consider. We've updated it multiple times.
All right.
There's big ones like O-five and this one, O-five was really big, and then there's some more modest ones that we've done.
Thank you.
And we'll see the last of this.
So, so I, just to clarify for myself, so I understand, if I'm understanding you correctly, so when I read this document, cause I mean, the document in front of me, I think it's like seventy-eight pages, the?
Oh yeah, it's a lot.
It was attached to my report before this was three hundred. Anything in red is basically a state required adjustment.
Yes.
The green though is more policy adjustment. And what I mean a policy adjustment, in other words, it's not, it's not required by the state, it's something that came under the recommendation of somewhat, somewhat.
Yes, yeah. Anything, anything that's not red, the initi, is initiated by one combination of either us, the EAC, the PC or all three.
Okay.
Yep.
And so the, the, cause when I see the green, so the thousand down to five hundred, that's more of a policy decision, not mandated by the state.
Correct, absolutely.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, so you're saying that by going from a thousand to five hundred, we would be increasing the burden on homeowner, the burden and cost for this issue on homeowners?
So there's no?
First, say property owners, I guess it's not just?
There is no other way to say it. I mean, I'm not, not, I'm not, again, I always be very careful about migrating from engineering into policy, but yes, if, if, if we pass it with the five hundred threshold, then tomorrow the twenty by sixty addition will cost a little bit more than it costs today.
And a little bit is?
About fifteen hundred, two thousand.
I see that, a little bit more than a little bit, but okay.
Just trying to be diplomatic.
I get it. Thank you very much for clarifying that for me, I appreciate it.
So Dave, if you did look at that impact, I agree, that's a big impact on a property owner. It's not as big of an impact for like a commercial project, for example. Is it possible to have those two be different?
You've gotta be real, I'm not even sure you're allowed?
Is that, yeah, that's, I don't know if that's even?
It's, it's kinda like, right?
Yeah, I wasn't sure.
I would think there'd be equality issues with.
Okay.
But here's what we know pragmatically from experience, we don't see a lot of non-residential applications coming in, in that window, that five hundred to a thousand. I'm not saying they don't come in, but it's a little bit, Hareford, again, Landmark Shopping Center's not coming in with, with something like that. Minnoia Shopping Center's not coming in the, typically with five hundred, the six hundred square foot of additional paving or impervious. It tends?
It's usually more.
The bigger developments, we tend not to see that and, and again, that rational method's gonna capture all sorts of stuff on the, the thousand and other, two thousand and up square foot ones, which is what we see the most of frankly, initial development, tear down houses.
There was a commercial property that came in somewhat recently, probably has stormwater facilities already in place that potentially could be adapted to this new addition. There wouldn't be a need to put in a new basin just because of the?
You don't have to go back retroactively, yeah.
Correct, but some, some of these commercial properties, unlike a homeowner's property, already have stormwater facilities installed if it's a more recent commercial development.
Yeah, yes, but if they're still expanding their impervious, unless they had built it in, in the first place, sometimes that happens.
Which they have the additional capacity for that basin, for example.
We even see that on some of the larger residential properties, they'll build, especially, well, the larger ones, like acre properties, kinda more in your neighborhood, they'll build a little bit extra impervious, they'll build a little extra stormwater management capacity into their system, say we're gonna build this, but recognize that they have some room to pop a, widen the driveway for basketball court, that, put a tennis court in, literally. I mean, we've, we've seen that sometimes on the bigger properties, not, not the majority of the township, but on the bigger ones.
Dave, is there any way to estimate dropping it to five hundred, what impact that has on stormwater to the?
attach it wide, in all ten square miles? It's funny you ask that, cause we were talking about that a lot. We don't really have a good feel on how many people that would be applicable to. We don't really have a good feel on do we see one permit a year that comes in between five and hun, and a hundred or a hundred and one? We just don't know. We just, I mean, and again, maybe it's, it might not be that predictable, right? You get a run on, you get a run on tear downs and that doesn't matter, but you get a run on people building in-law suites. It's just, it's just not, and, and in fact, we, we really wanted to try to put the ration, quantification on the rational method to just that and we still, we couldn't do it. It's, 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 it's kinda intuitive at this point. We know the rational method is, is a good one to, to eliminate and it'll really help us in our overall stormwater management. I can't quantify what you brought up. Wish I could, cause we really tried.
Did, I mean, couldn't you go back through previous years and?
We don't see those permits.
Couldn't we do that?
I wish I, I wish I could do that for you. I, I'm not sure, it would take a while.
Okay.
It's all boxed up, there's not really, it's not as much digital.
No, that's fine. Yeah, I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, because then we would have a sense of how it is gonna impact, potentially impact people's?
We did unfortunately.
Individual budgets.
And, and it's, it's, it's like, you know, we have records offsite, they've got records boxed and it's not always easy to retrieve. I guess one way to look at it, five hundred square feet is ten times fifty, right? So it's adding on to your driveway, right? Another lane in your driveway typically.
Dave, for, in addition to the cost, for example, if they, they did that and had to build additional basin, that would be most likely for a residential property, an above-ground basin, because they're not gonna likely put that underground.
Well, this, the, the model does allow for certain things like to maybe, if you have the room for like a rain garden or something to do that, so it doesn't prohibit above, but ninety-nine times out of a hundred, it's below grade.
Okay.
Cause you're talking about the quarter acre lot, right? You're talking about, about a typical quarter acre lot.
And that's what I was getting at, they're, they're, if it was above ground, they would have to maintain that.
Yes.
It would take their ground away from them playing in.
Yep.
Would they then be required by the township to maintain those even though it was not a land development?
Yes.
In any case?
That's a question, that was already actually baked into the O-five update, but with Jamie mentioning, there's gonna be some additional inspection levels. When you built a stormwater management facility that was approved as part of an addition or a tear down or, or again, Hareford Reserve, there's a maintenance fund that we have that, that Amy's aware of. Every time we get a grading permit, money goes into the maintenance fund, which is the township's maintenance funds and part of that is the inspection of facilities. We just had a property where we haven't, nobody's, I'm gonna say through, nobody's walked, like changed homeowner, 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 and then somewhere along the line, somebody modified it. Probably not on purpose, right? I mean, they're just like, ah, I'm cutting my loan, I changed something and now I gotta go back and put it back to where it was supposed to be. So they, that's a long answer to your question of yes, they're absolutely responsible and it's by agreement and the agreement gets recorded with the property.
And are those additional costs for inspections and maintenance included in that number or is that an additional cost?
They've already been calculated into the maintenance fund that gets established since two thousand and five.
But for the cost of the homeowner?
Oh, oh, if you go with the smaller, oh, with that, that's a good point. If you go, you know, you didn't think about that. If you go with this lower threshold, there'll have to be some level of maintenance fund contribution. It probably wouldn't be the same, it wouldn't be the same as, we have to justify it as a, as a?
Correct, it's a smaller facility.
Proportionally smaller.
Less inspection, but still an ongoing requirement to maintain and an ongoing?
And requirement for us to go look at it or somebody to go look at it.
For the homeowner.
Yeah, it's a good point, well, that's a good point. I didn't think about, we didn't think about that.
Also, the actual requirements for the inspections are changing. So right now they're every three years for ten years and it's gonna be annual for five years and then every three years for ten years, but that, that's a big change. You're gonna have, you know, at least those first five years, an annual inspection of, of anything that is qualified as stormwater.
You indicated the agreements to, to the initial stormwater management are, have to be recorded?
Yeah, they get recorded with the property.
And whose, whose responsibility is it to record it for the property?
The landowner.
It's the landowner?
The landowner.
And do, is there any verification process to ensure that the, cause I'm just, I'm, what I'm concerned about is you have, you know, say the third generation in the house and the original landowner, you know, didn't care, didn't pay attention, didn't do whatever, didn't record it, now you have an unsuspecting homeowner that's gonna get dragged into something. I just didn't know if there was a verification process to ensure that the original homeowner actually did what they were supposed to do.
Yeah, that's what we're for. The codes department does that upfront, right? When the, when the stormwater management system gets put in place. So that kind of all happens in our office, you know, at the ground level before anything moves forward, they have to pay the fee that, that covers all those inspections over the years and, and then also record that agreement.
Okay, so they have to prove to you that it's recorded?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And your point's well taken, that's exactly what we're running into right now with a couple generations of houses, somebody, and again, I think it was ever done maliciously, but they modified the system some. But the fund we have in place now gives us the resources to go inspect, do some testing and get it put back the way it was supposed to be.
With your work with other municipalities, do you see many other municipalities surrounding areas dropping that threshold to five hundred?
That's a real good question. In fact, that's what my notes, I'm gonna read, are surrounding municipalities in what called the Crum watershed?
Right.
Are already at five hundred. In the Crum watershed you require, so that means Springfield, Marple, Springfield, Marple, Newtown, they're already at five hundred.
Okay.
Lower Marion, Lower Marion's like, like, they're almost at zero.
I guess Edgemont would be in there as well probably, right?
Edgemont, Concord, I think's at five hundred. Now what those municipalities do, do, still do is they still allow the rationale method. We're gonna be a little bit of an outlier, except for our neighbors to the, to the north, Lower Marion, who also don't allow the rational method. So that, that's a good point, like if you're, if you're getting a cup of coffee at the Starbucks in Newtown, you're, those, those neighbors are already, they've been dealing with the four, the five hundred since two thousand and five. who also don't allow the rational method. So that, that's a good point. Like if you're, you're getting a cup of coffee at the Starbucks in Newtown, you're, those, those neighbors are already, they've been dealing with the four, the five hundred since two thousand and five. Twelve, two thousand.
I'm sorry, why, you said they were, they were required to, who required, who required that?
The state of Pennsylvania required their threshold to go down to five hundred because they were in a, they were a different watershed. They were in a concrete watershed.
So the fact that they were in a different watershed dictated this, this different standard?
Yep.
Okay.
That actually prompts my question, which is you mentioned earlier that some of these changes are inevitable. Is that an inevitable change from the state?
You know, I, to be honest with you, I kind of thought they would have done that because most of the watersheds are at five hundred. They didn't. They haven't done it yet. I don't think that, I kind of don't think they will. Derby Cobbs watershed, you know that watershed as good as anybody, right? It's eastern Delaware County. I suspect they, they're, they don't see the big bang for the buck impact. I mean, you're talking about a lot of communities with row homes and, and tight, you're talking about up at Harvey, right? Derby Cobbs watershed.
You're talking about the sixth ward. I mean, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they're downstream from us, but it's very, very dense housing. And somebody even has room to put that kind of addition on and then they, they're told they got to put a seepage bed in the backyard. It's tough. So I suspect, nobody from the D P has said this or the county, but I suspect they know it's relatively difficult in those dense areas to, to implement that requirement.
And we cannot, as I understand, we cannot differentiate between properties. So people living on five acres versus people living on a tenth of an acre, five hundred feet is the threshold, right?
You know, I, I, again, a little bit in John's neighborhood, but it certainly feels a little arbitrary if you start to do that. And, oh, let me say one other thing. The model ordinance does not differentiate by density of housing. The model ordinance is all go by watershed. So the state, certainly the state is not differentiated. I can't tell you a township's never done it. Certainly the state goes, sticks to the watersheds. If we, if we took our watershed and said, hey, this part of the watershed, it's five hundred, this part it's a thousand. I just don't know about implementing that.
I know Narberth had in the past sort of two versions of the same ordinance because they had two different watersheds that it used to go to. But that was based upon their, the area having two different watersheds.
Well, let me tell you, Marple, I believe, has a small part in Derby watershed, but it's, it was so small and the Crum was a little more restrictive. They just liked to use Crum everywhere.
Springfield did the same thing.
Yep. We're, we're entirely Derby Cobbs. Lower Marion's probably got four watersheds.
So the entirety would be based upon that watershed requirements from the D E P.
Any other questions? Any questions in between now and whenever you want to act, don't hesitate to ask or, or call or anything. All right.
Thank you. Thank you both. Fine work. We have a number of resolutions to consider next week, as well as a few contract awards. We have spent some significant time today on two things, so I'll go through these quickly and see if anybody has anything that they want to raise. First resolution will be an ARPA resolution for public works heavy equipment, paving at the Public Works yard, Farwood Road sidewalk project and the emergency sewer replacement on Landover Road. It's a resolution that approves the use of ARPA funds. There will no doubt be a contract later that does that same thing. Also, resolution number twenty four oh three is the dedication of ARPA funds for various recreation projects. Brian, ten seconds or less, what projects are those? Nine, eight, seven, six. Thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments on that?
The diagram that was sent out for the baseball lighting at Glendale Field, I know this is, you know, a while ago when this plan went out. I think we talked about this, light towers are all going to be on the outside so that the multi-use field stays multi-use, correct? Thank you. That's what I figured. I got some questions on that. All right, thank you.
More people running into them, trying to catch a ball. Yeah. Like the old goalposts at the, at the goal line. Yeah, at the goal line. For showing off our age. The next resolution for our consideration will be also the dedication of ARPA funds for Discover Havreford for horticultural maintenance services. We will consider a resolution next week, twenty four oh five, the use of ARPA funds to fund the C H planning parking study.
Can, can we hear a little bit about that or have we already?
You have heard a little bit about that. You awarded a contract to C H planning to study the parking in the business districts. This is asking for additional funding just to expand the number of locations that we'll be looking at in particular.
Thank you.
They put some coin meters back in there. Any chance we could do that?
I guess we'll see what the study, study comes up with.
Well, if I was on the committee, we'd have some coin meters, that's for sure. We will also be considering a resolution twenty four oh six for the dedication of ARPA funds for purchasing five dual port electric vehicle charging stations for our police parking lot and resolution number twenty four oh seven relating to safe streets of all, sorry, streets, safe streets for all, the comprehensive safety action plan. Resolution twenty four oh eight, twenty twenty four, use of ARPA funds for the police department to purchase two electric vehicles. I wrote in one new acquisition this weekend.
Yes, you did commiserate, these are patrol vehicles that we're purchasing in addition to two we had to reorder. Conversation with David and Amy two weeks ago, we were able to add two more to the fleet. So I expect to see them any day and hopefully we'll have them in service soon.
Excellent.
Now, you've had concerns about the electric vehicles in the past. Are you comfortable or?
I'll let you know after we drive them for a while.
Because that's what I was.
Because I haven't seen them yet.
Because that's what I was about to ask.
They're only, they're only going to chase getaway electric vehicles, right?
That's what I was about to ask. Is there things that can't be, be used and can, that can be used for these?
Concern was not so much the electric vehicle. We're, we're concerned about durability because we don't know how long they'll last, but we'll try that out. The concern is we can only drive them for a number of hours and they have to plug them back in again. So what we're doing is one's going to be plugged in and one will be used on patrol. So we'll be rotating them back and forth and that's the biggest drawback with them at this point.
And how about, are there neighboring police forces who have been using them?
There's, there's a, a few that might have one or two. We'll probably have the biggest fleet by the end of the year, so hopefully that'll work out. I'm looking forward to it.
Yes, chief. Yeah. I have, I have a question just with regards to the electric vehicles. I know obviously there's more people residentially that are getting electric vehicles and it seems that the township is expanding its own fleet of electric vehicles. In my conversations with the fire companies, it's been brought up that if one of those electric vehicles happens to go up, it's a whole different level of fire. And so I know that there's new technologies out there that are being designed to help with that situation. I believe there's like a blanket that you throw on a burning E V that.
That's correct.
Do, do, to your knowledge, do any of our companies have those yet?
At the present time, we do not. Myself and a few other fire officers went to Indianapolis in the spring for the fire show, the F D I C. We closely examined some of that stuff. We found the blankets and special nozzles because you have to go under the car and put the fire out. And I'll be talking to David and Amy in next week or so. They're not expensive. They're really not expensive at all. Hopefully taking out of emergency management money, so.
Thank you.
We are going to move forward with it.
Thank you.
Have we had an electric car fire in Havenford Township yet?
Have we had one? No, we haven't. We've been lucky.
You had regular car fires?
Oh, all the time.
Thanks, chief. Resolution number twenty four hundred of twenty twenty four, Pico twenty twenty four Green Region Grant, Lawrence Road Park and Brookline Park. And we will also be considering resolution twenty four ten, Giant Food Market, looking to modify its liquor license.
Wait, do we have any details on that? What's going on with that?
With Giant Food?
Yes, with the liquor license modification.
Yep, we do have a representative.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'll, I'll keep it brief and just answering questions that you all might have. My name's Ellen Freeman. I'm an attorney with Flaherty and O'Hara. I represent Giant food stores. I also have Scott Schaefer here with me this evening from Giant, so he can step in as well. But essentially what we're asking for is a modification of a resolution, which was originally passed in two thousand and twelve and then it was also amended in two thousand and eighteen. And the amendment for this, this time around would be to allow for the ready to drink cocktails. The liquor code was just recently amended this year to allow for restaurant liquor licenses to sell in the same manner that they do for both beer and wine. Back in two thousand and twelve, the township approved a resolution to transfer the license into the municipality and restricted Giant to only sell beer. So then in two thousand and eighteen, they were allowed to sell wine with that modification. And so this would be a similar request to modify to allow for the ready to drink cocktail sales.
Thank you.
And not to cause any inner company strife, but the Acme already has the ready to drink sales at theirs, doesn't it? Don't they?
Yes, that's correct. I mean, I would say that probably ninety percent of the grocery stores now that have liquor licenses in Pennsylvania have received those permits. I know that Giant had all of their other stores, as well as their Martins, has obtained those permits and they are selling at their other stores.
Anybody have any questions for, I'm sorry, Ms., your, your name?
Oh, Ellen Freeman.
Freeman. Any other questions for Attorney Freeman? Thank you very much.
No problem.
So after resolutions, we will have a number of contracts to consider next week. We will be formalizing a contract for professional services with Penoni Associates to obligate funding available through the ARPA plan, through ARPA for the completion of previously awarded ARPA projects that are anticipated to still be in process after the, the obligation deadline of December thirty first, twenty twenty four. We will be formalizing a contract with Discover Havreford for the use of the ARPA funding for horticultural maintenance services. And we will be formalizing a contract with the Chester County Intermediate Unit. You are authorizing a donation to Pipeline.
Can I just ask, the, the contract with the Chester County Intermediate Unit, can someone just give any kind of detail on what that actually is?
Yeah, we were offering autism spectrum disorder programming and we're hiring their staff to staff those programs.
Okay.
Yeah, so they're very capable. Yeah, so they have expertise that we don't have in-house.
Sounds good.
That's great, Brian. Did you have that last year for the programming?
Yes, yeah, that's how we are. The programs that happened this past year, we're through with the Chester County program and we're just waiting on the contract language for next year.
Thanks.
Wonderful. Thank you for telling us that. Authorization for a donation to Pipeline fifty eight. Dave?
So the fire companies approached the township and asked if we could donate Pipeline fifty eight, which was already out of service and we were preparing to sell to a fire company called the Crary Hose Company. And that's in Westfield, Pennsylvania. And they were, they lost all of their equipment in floods in a tropical storm earlier this year. And so that truck has recently been delivered and we're looking for the board to ratify that.
Oh, gee. How many of us are going to say no to that?
Yeah, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
No way. Yeah. Donating a used fire truck to a community in need. Yeah, I think that should go pretty well next week. We will also be awarding contracts, our electricity and natural gas procurement contract, our Farwood Road sidewalk project, Public Works paving complex at Hilltop Road, and also the Oakford Road culvert project will begin phase one. There'll be a contract awarded for that. Next week, we will be authorizing or considering authorizing public works heavy equipment, purchasing a roll off truck, various things at Park and Rec, as we described several minutes ago in a lot more than ten seconds. Police Department, as we said earlier, the purchase of five dual port electric vehicle charging stations and two electric vehicles. And Havreford Township free library renovation addition project, construction change orders. We do not have anybody from the library today, so am I hoping we'll get an explanation of that next week?
That's correct. We expect the construction manager to be here to explain and answer questions next week.
Excellent. We will be considering the appointments next week of two citizens from Havreford Township to fill a spot on our newly configured naming committee. And to great manfare, I think I will be appointing someone to the senior citizens advisory council.
Wow.
Next week. So everybody, yeah. I would advise everybody to hold their breath. I would say right now it looks, it looks better than not. Next, and next week's meeting is Tuesday, not Monday? Okay. Finally, we'll be considering, we will be doing two proclamations, Havreford Stadium. For folks who didn't hear, it's proclamation at Township Day. You will get a chance to hear it again as we proclaim fifty glorious years of Havreford Stadium's presence and use in our township and contribution to our town. And we will also be heralding the National Friends of Libraries Week. That is everything for next week's agenda. Does anybody have anything to add or discuss or comment on any of these items? Hearing none, I will entertain a, oh, I forgot to announce, prior to our meeting, we met at six thirty in executive session to speak about a matter involving litigation. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.